I'd like to call to order a meeting of the Durant City Council tonight. If you would please stand with me and I'll offer an invocation and then we'll have a flag salute. Let's pray together. God, our Father in heaven, we're so blessed to be in your presence this evening. We're so thankful to live in this community. We're so thankful that we have this place that we can call home where we can work and enjoy each other's company. Lord, we pray that you would bless the city staff, the work they do to make this a better place to live. Pray that you would bless the leadership of the city also as they do their best work every day to improve the lives of the people in Durant. And God, we're just so thankful for your son, Jesus, our Savior who died for us. And all these things we pray in Jesus' name. Amen. If you would, please face the flag and render a hand salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, and please be seated. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Miller?
Here.
Councilmember Shear?
Here.
Councilmember Fuller? Oh, sorry. Vice Mayor Simulescu?
Here.
Mayor Tucker?
Here. We have a quorum. And so at this time, I would invite the council down in front of the dais with me. We're going to present some awards. It's on. The first thing I have is a proclamation for Diabetes Awareness Month. And if Ryan Brewer would come up, I'd like to present this to Ryan. November 25th is Diabetes Awareness Month. So whereas diabetes is a chronic illness in which blood sugar levels are higher than normal, and in the United States, 136 million Americans have diabetes or are pre-diabetic. And whereas 1.2 million Americans are diagnosed every year with diabetes. And whereas about one in three seniors in the United States has diabetes. And whereas diabetes contributes to the death of nearly 400,000 Americans annually. And whereas diabetes is a serious disease with potentially life-threatening complications, including heart disease, stroke, amputation, end-stage kidney disease, blindness, and death. And whereas an increase in public awareness of risk factors, of symptoms, and the importance of healthy lifestyle choices can improve health outcomes and reduce the devastating complications of diabetes. And whereas research, treatment advancements, and education are crucial for those affected by diabetes, and public events can help raise funds and awareness for these efforts. And whereas the American Diabetes Association celebrates its 85th year in 2025, renewing its commitment to fighting for all people affected by diabetes. Now, therefore, I, Martin Tucker, the mayor of the city of Durant, do hereby proclaim the month of November as Diabetes Awareness Month. And I want to present this to Ryan Brewer on behalf of that. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. So Ryan has family that's affected by diabetes, and it's been part of my family as well. So we're thankful that we can do this.
Thank you, Ryan. Thank you.
Next, I would ask that Melissa and Dylan would come up for our next proclamation. Melissa and Dylan work for a bank that's headquartered here in our town and have for a long time. The bank's been here a long time, First United Bank. So this proclamation is commemorating First United Bank's 125th anniversary as of October the 2nd. It's a few days ago, but we're close, okay? So whereas First United Bank was established in 1900, and over the past 125 years has grown into a leading financial institution known for its unwavering commitment to service, integrity, and community partnerships. And whereas First United Bank has consistently demonstrated values-driven leadership, empowering individuals and communities through financial stewardship and the guiding philosophy of spend life wisely. And whereas the bank's legacy is reflected not only in its longevity, but in the lives it has impacted, the dreams it has supported, and the communities it has helped strengthen through intentional investment and heartfelt service. And whereas the city of Durant recognizes First United Bank as a cornerstone of our local identity, a model of purpose-driven growth, and a trusted partner in building a future rooted in generosity, accountability, and shared success. Now, therefore, I, Martin Tucker, mayor of the city of Durant, do hereby proclaim October the 2nd of 2025 as First United Bank's 125th Anniversary Day. And I want to present this to Melissa and to Dylan. Thank you so much. Thank you very much. So next, one of our favorite things to do at city council are service awards for part of the Durant city staff. Tonight, we're going to celebrate, well, I've got to redo the math because we've got a late add-in here. Tonight, we're going to celebrate 135 years, that's pretty good math, right? 135 years of dedicated service to the city of Durant with these folks that we're about to recognize tonight. So we're going to begin with the five-year awards. Would Gregory Adams please come forward? Gregory Adams is in our emergency management department. Gregory's been here for five years. Thank you, sir. We're going to present Gregory with a certificate and a pen and a check for $50. And if you've got family, Gregory, well, everybody, if you've got family, come on up here and we can have a picture. They're not? Well, we'll take you then. How about that? Next is Michael Clayborne. Would you please come up, Michael? Michael Clayborne works in Public Works for five years. Thank you, sir. Michael gets a certificate and a pen and a check for $50. And do you have family, Michael, here?
Yes.
Thank you, Michael. Next is Zachariah Leslie of the Street Department. Zachariah? Here he comes. Zachariah's worked for five years with us. He gets a certificate and a pen and a check for $50. Thank you, Zachariah. Next is Brianna Myers. And if I pronounce your name wrong, I apologize. Brianna Myers-Landeros from the Utility Line Maintenance. Is that close? Well, I should have rehearsed this ahead of time. B, okay, B, got it. She gets a certificate and a pen and a check for $50 as well. So Brianna, where's your family? Let's move up here. We're going to, let's just move up here and make this. Now it's Captain Jimmy Chavez here. Brian, I'm sorry. James Brian Chavez. I'll get it right in a minute. I should read these things instead of going by my memory, right? I apologize for that. 20 years of service to the Durant Police Department. Yay, absolutely. And he brought a fan. That's awesome. Tonight, Brian gets a certificate and a plaque and a pen and a check for $200. We're all happy as he is, aren't we? We just might not look like it all the time. Our last person tonight we want to recognize with 30 years of service to the city of Durant is Michael Stinson. Michael Stinson, who works in the Utility Line Maintenance Department. 30 years of service. Michael gets a certificate and a pen and a plaque and a check for $300. So this is Kenny Cooper, and I went right by it there. 15 years. Kenneth, 15 years working for us in the landfill. Thank you, sir. And it takes the whole staff to keep me straight. Yeah, knock yourself out. All right. Thank you all very much. We enjoyed doing that, and I appreciate you all being here to participate in that with us as well. Good times. Okay, now we're in our regular session here. For the first order of business is the consent agenda. And on the consent agenda are several items. We've got the meeting minutes of September the 18th, the budget supplement approval consideration, mayor recommendation of the two gentlemen for the Board of Adjustments, David Ryans and Mike Davis. Those are reappointments. So do I hear a motion or is there an item that needs to be pulled out of the consent agenda for separate consideration? Motion to approve consent items?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve all the consent agenda items. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Shear?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Simulescu?
Yes.
Mayor Tucker?
Yes. Next, on the agenda, item two under, is items removed from consent? There are none, so we'll move on down to item three. And this is department reports. We're going to have a report from each of the department heads. And before we begin, and you might test the sound there, Mr. Hightower, before we begin, I want to make sure that everyone in the audience here tonight knows. Usually these middies are relatively short. I like to get in and out. Tonight's going to be an exception. So if you're staying for the whole meeting, you know, just buckle in because we're going to be here for a bit, okay? Mr. Hightower?
Good evening, council. I'll start with Street Department. I've just hit the high points over the last quarter. Potholes that we repaired were 505, 46 utility cuts, 120 signs that had maintenance performed on them, painted the crosswalks around the schools, repaired culverts at Lake Larkspur Lane and McLean Road, repaired and poured new drain boxes at Peanut Lane, Second Avenue, Jones Street, 13th and Tennessee Avenue. Repaired driveway approaches at Third Street, Fourth Street, Fifth Street, Ninth Street avenues. Added barriers around parking on Armstrong Road and First Avenue. Did concrete repair on West Side Drive on some of the panels there. We milled and overlaid 4.7 miles of road and striped where that needed to be striped. We have, we ordered some new traffic mile visions for Brian Drive and out at Big Lots Road. We're trying those out to see how we like those to control our signal lights. And then we also bought us a new mile vision scout where we can do traffic counts or pedestrian counts or just about anything else. That, we did many, many other things during the last three months, but that's kind of the highlights of what we did. Any questions on the Street Department? Utility line maintenance, repaired 95 water leaks, 15 water taps, and did nine sewer taps. The manhole rehabilitation project we've got going on is about 87% complete. We worked on several lift stations, replaced some check valves and stuff at the mobile home park, and installed some new pumps at the West Side Drive lift station. City garage, they did a ton of work. We've had trash trucks that went down. They worked on several of those. I'll hit those in the solid waste division. Worked on tractors, worked on landfill trucks. We placed transmission clutch in a couple, in one truck and clutches and stuff in another at the landfill. Garage stayed real busy the last. Out at the water treatment plant, they treated 544,421 million gallons of water from Blue River. Of course, they did their normal everyday tests of the water, DEQ stuff. They replaced one pump at the high service. They replaced the pumping motor up there right off of Gerlach. A new underdrain was installed in the old plant filter building, in the number one filter. And they just mainly, like I said, they did maintenance and daily routines. Solid waste collection, we, we had on bulk waste hauling from August and September, July figures, we couldn't figure because of the ransomware. But we had over $1,291 that we collected in bulky waste material. We had a monthly pickup first of October. We had 15 signed up for that. Like I said, we had four of the trucks that had to be repaired on in the last, well, actually the last part of the corner. We had to repair PTO shaft pumps, and mainly it was all hydraulic on these trucks. All of them but one are back on the road picking up trash. Waste water treatment plant, we finally got our permit to construct. After two and a half years, we finally got that. They did routine testing. We have three SBRs that are up and running now. They replaced blowers on those. They're replacing bulbs and boards on their UV system daily. When we can get a board in, we replace electronic boards on those. Everything's running a lot better out of the wastewater plant right now. Solid waste landfill, construction materials that we brought in was 3,489 tons, and that goes in our hole as construction stuff. We sent 4,789 tons to Ardmore. We collected 73.7 tons of waste from the citizens of Durant using their water bills. Chalk, we sent 26 tons of cardboard to Choctaw. We received 207 tons of brush to be in our brush pile out there. We replaced a blade on the West Side Transfer Station, and we had several roll-off trucks that we had to work on as well. And that's it in a nutshell. Do you have any questions?
No questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. Hightower. Next is Mr. Brewer, Parks and Rec.
Good evening. Thank you again for the proclamation for the diabetes awareness. So parks, it's a busy time of the year. We, most of the time, during month one and two, most of it was mowing. We're just, September is when we were able to start getting back on to projects. But this quarter, we've had three special events. Two were the concert series, and one was a community event down at Carl Albert. We've had 13 tournaments. We've had over 750 hours of facility booking through our facility website for practices, tournaments, a whole nine yards. Recreation League, right now we're sitting at 1,400 participants between adult softball, soccer, flag football, youth baseball, and softball. We are starting the, planning for the 2026 Sports Festival. According to PlaceRai, we actually had around 19,000 people at the complex alone. So other areas, we're still getting numbers. We have had two events coming up. On October 30th, we have a trunk or treat. We are partnering with Durant Soccer Club to do a trunk or treat out of the complex. Also, on November 2nd, Also on November 2nd, we are having a, the 2025 Durant Breakthrough T1D Walk. This is the event that me and my wife started last year. We had 100 people show up for the event itself. We are now actually registered as a T1D or breakthrough T1D event every year from here on out. Even if me and my wife decide to stop doing it, someone is going to plan it because we've raised so much money. It's a permanent staple for this area. We are actually able to bring in people from Dallas and Oklahoma City Tulsa area because we fit in both demographics. So we're excited for that. That'll be November 2nd, 3:00 PM. We have projects that we just started. We repainted the pool lines and lanes, getting, doing all the facility repairs for start of next year. We got Dixon Park lights installed. And then right now we have currently projects lined up is Schuler Park Playground is being installed. All that's left is the port in place fall protection and they are on their way back at the, either later this week or early next week. Working on getting the rocket refurbished at Dixon Durant Park. Security lights installed at Carl Albert Park. We are, whenever they come back to do the port in place, they are actually going to start the softball shade structures on fields six and seven. We'll close one field down. They'll get that done and then they'll move to the other. We have received a grant from Musco Lighting to do a small discount. So we actually are able to put in new lights all at the soccer complex with their help. O G and E, Colton's Run and the youth soccer club are all coming together to get that done. We're replacing backstop nets. Lake, we just started back up on the RV pad renovation. We have two pads formed. We're going to get concrete soon. Lake House renovations. We got siding, electrical and drywall left. We have started a project for bald eagle nesting sites. We have two sets of bald eagles that have made that a permanent place. So we are building nets or nests for them to actually build a home. And once they get established, we're hoping to get a grant with the federal and state wildlife department to get webcams to go on to those. That's in the process. And then pool lightning detector and getting that moved forward. This quarter, we have generated $51,000 in revenue from concession stand sales, field reservations and everything. And we have a cost recovery rate of 14% in our first quarter, which is almost unheard of in Durant Parks and Rec Department. So we're actually in the process of improving.
Questions?
Question. You said the soccer fields are getting lights. Is that what I understood?
Yep.
So you're going to put big poles in and that kind of thing?
Yes. So they, we are still waiting to get the order placed so them to come in. And it'll take six to eight weeks. So roughly, once I get that PO in, they will start building. The lights and poles will get here right when soccer's wrapping up. And then O G and E, they'll put in the poles and lights. O G and E is going to come in and do the ground layer.
Now the rest of the lights at the complex, like, you know, the baseball softball, we talked in the past that you're going to replace those at some point. Has that been done or is that we're working towards it?
It hasn't been done. I mean, until this year, they have just now started going out.
Okay.
We're replacing ballast to make sure that they still go. We can go about two ways. It's going to be $500, $600 for the ballast or we can pay $1,000 and get LED light. So we're toying with that and seeing what we can afford in our current budget.
I'm guessing the soccer fields will be LEDs, right?
Yes, soccer fields will be LED and have its own control that we can operate from our phones and computers.
Okay. Now I just, I know you brushed through a lot of it. That's all. I was just curious because I remember that talk. So I appreciate that clarity.
I want to appreciate your staff and you on the concert series. I only made it to one, but that was a lot of hours. And the next morning at 6:30, it was like it never happened. And those guys were out there putting up stuff and those were long days. But a lot of people had really enjoyed our city during those events. So thank you for doing that work.
We actually are in the running for one grant already. And we are the top two for the 2026 Oklahoma Parks and Rec Conference to be taking place here in Durant. And we are in the running for the Oklahoma Parks and Rec Gold Medal Award. So we'll find out later in November.
Very good.
Yes, I'm president-elect, president kind of deal, so.
Great. Yeah. Good stuff. All good stuff.
Any other questions?
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brewer, Director Brewer. Good job. Next, we want to hear from Mr. Godfrey on the airport.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I first want, as a new guy, I first want to take the occasion to give a hat tip to my fellow department heads who've suffered my many questions to them and have helped out in many ways with the airport. So thank you, gentlemen. And also the entire city staff. They've been fantastic. So I feel very welcome here. I beg your indulgence. I'm not an orator, so for expediency's sake, I'm going to read from my notes. And likewise, if you'll permit me to put on my spectacles while I do so.
I had on my glasses reading from my notes and still messed up the awardee, so it's okay.
Well, good. I feel better then. The timeline of my report today extends back to April when I first joined the city. So many municipalities struggle to justify their airport, but Durant has the good fortune of an airport with extraordinary prospects and diverse air traffic. I'm here to exploit those aspects. And the overarching goal is to make the airport a greater asset, economic and otherwise, for the community. Besides the incumbent expectation to completely operate or to competently operate the airport, my job is to protect the city from loss and as an enterprise account, to make the airport financially self-sustaining so as not to be a burden to the city in that aspect. There are several aspects to the airport. The physical property of 840 acres of developed and undeveloped land. The airfield consisting of the runway and taxiway system that are sustained in large part by federal grants. The non-movement areas such as pavements around hangars and aircraft parking areas that are generally funded by state and federal grants. Then there's the terminal hangars and other buildings that have limited grant funding. And notably, the terminal has a bond that matures in 2029. A fixed base operation is an entity that fuels aircraft and can be operated by airports or a private entity. And the airport operates the FBO at Durant. With respect to capital projects, notably, I'm happy to say the city manager and our economic development director and other stakeholders have recently secured a $3 million appropriation from the state legislature for an initial development of an air traffic control tower. This appropriation will fund a siting study and design phase starting around April of 2026. This is the first new control tower in Oklahoma in several decades. And its significance to the state and their bullish posture toward the Texoma region should not be understated. Contention upon the siting study, we anticipate the location for a tower to be situated between the airport terminal and the southeastern aviation campus. It's right in that, in that green field right between us. Additionally, the design phase of a long anticipated grant-funded aircraft parking area expansion will begin in 2026. The state desires to subsidize and bootstrap a new large hangar development concurrent with this project. Parking expansion is an acute need. During peak times, we struggle to handle transient aircraft in a safe and efficient manner. Furthermore, this airport has no long-term aircraft tie-down accommodations. This is unusual for a general aviation airport and frustrates affordable storage options for aircraft and revenue to the airport. When arriving to manage an airport ISS and take stock of the facility and its operations, first tasks are to take care of the urgent and immediate things. Second, are finding any safety issues. As a federally obligated airport, I likewise do an audit to ensure airport sponsor, to ensure the airport sponsor, which is the city, is compliant with its grant assurances. All else flows from those immediate tasks. In general, what I found is this facility with a few minor, excuse me. In general, what I found is this facility has a few minor safety issues that I rectified. General housekeeping issues, including deferred maintenance and some staff guidance. As for grant assurances, there were lingering questions over airport property dispositions. And secondly, overgrown vegetation creating obstruction hazards in certain areas that the state had concerns about. On the former, I petitioned the FAA and they provided a letter to the airport stating that all property issues were resolved to their satisfaction. I'm happy to say. Respecting the latter, a 13-acre parcel, excuse me, acquired several years ago was never cleared of vegetation and to do so will cost around $83,000. Instead, I elected to knock down the most egregious vegetation on the perimeter of that parcel and at other areas of concern around the airport on an ad hoc basis. That was done so at a cost of $3,600. Both these actions were satisfactory to the state. Now I'll just quickly walk through some highlights of operational activity over the last few months. April, I'm told, was the wettest month on record in Oklahoma. A wet summer too. As such, the airport was overgrown for most of the season and we struggled to keep the facility mowed. Thankfully, Parks and Rec came out to assist on two occasions and we have a revenue contract for hay harvesting, which is a big help. In the meantime, a part-time seasonal groundskeeper was hired to finish out the season. A mini excavator is stored at the airport that was acquired in 2023. It's had little use and is in like new condition. The airport cannot justify its retention and offered it to the utilities who agreed to take it. This represents a $48,000 asset reallocation in favor of the city. A TSA compliant surveillance camera system was procured in 2024 at a cost of $32,000. $18,000 worth of equipment was received but not yet installed. I determined the system was not needed and canceled the project, saving over $15,000 in installation cost and then the ongoing maintenance cost of the system. The equipment was transferred to the city IT department for use in other facilities. The airport terminal was built in 2011 and three original air conditioning units were beyond their useful life and one was non-functioning. Other units were previously replaced. And for the purpose of economy of scale, three HVAC units, HVAC units were replaced at the same time recently, actually this last week, at the same time by a local business at a cost of $33,258. This was an acute need as the terminal was uncomfortable all summer. An FBO operation in the terminal was either an afterthought or not fully contemplated as the current layout is problematic for operational and safety reasons. The line service staff require a segregated workspace with a view of the aircraft operating area and direct access to the outside. An underutilized kitchen area in the north side of the terminal is therefore being converted to a line staff office at a cost of $15,486. The vacated area will become available for rental space. An aircraft hangar normally reserved for monthly hangar lease has been converted into a transient aircraft hangar where none previously existed. In four months, this has generated an additional $4,760 in overnight fees as opposed to $1,240 in rent. Another hangar used for airport equipment storage is being vacated and that hangar will generate an additional $3,720 in annual rent. In and of these, in and of the, excuse me, in and of, excuse me, in and of themselves, these are not remarkable items that act as small margins that contribute to the economy of the airport. Now, in closing, the exciting vision thing I want to leave you guys with is this airport parcel where we're thinking about putting the control tower. I see this as an incubator and the nexus for the next phase of development at the airport. Along with novel economic possibilities for this parcel, a key aspect of this development area is to act as a vocational airpark for our trifecta of educational stakeholders, the university, Kaimichi Tech and the high school, the local high school aviation program. And regarding the latter, the Oklahoma Aeronautics Commission recently awarded Durant Public Schools an aero education grant of $10,500. So this powerful combination will act as an additional attractant to corporate investment that will benefit our youngsters. This vision will likewise aligns with the state of Oklahoma that is ranked number one in the nation for aviation education initiatives, giving Durant a significant seat at that table. As this develops and to be successful, it's crucial to have the support of city leadership. And that's, that's all I have for you folks. Oh, one more thing. I see 2026 as a new paradigm for the airport and accordingly, a new look is needed. And therefore, we have commissioned a fresh logo for the airport I'd like to make public today. So if you would please, sir, I'll have him reveal that. And there it is. Oh, can't see it?
I thought he was going to go draw it. Here's a blank. I thought he was going to go draw it. I'm going to ask him personally. All right.
It looks good.
Like it?
You folks have any questions?
Then it's one thing you were making reference there toward the end of your comments about the high school and the state and their process toward aviation education. I don't know that everyone's aware, but in the state of Oklahoma, high school kids can now take an aviation class in high school for credit. And then it's not an extra class. It's instead of something else, they can take aviation. And so there are a lot of young students here in Durant taking aviation instead of like history or whatever else it is that they have to have to graduate. And so that's a big plus on leading kids into that for.
Precisely.
We'll hold you to that.
Optimistic. That's what I was told by the experts.
So Mr. Hightower now talked to the experts all the time at DEQ and
Yeah, yeah.
Three years, yeah. I don't know. That'll be great.
All right, thank you.
If it happens, that'll be awesome. So good report. Thank you, sir. Next is Chief Petty with the police department.
Good evening. And it's going to be hard to follow up Ryan with bald eagles. I didn't bring a sign, so I'll try my best. They're setting the bar for you high. So with that, I'll give you kind of the highlights, if you will, or the breakdown of the police department's last three months' activity of kind of the highlight overview, calls for service, breakdown on kind of what some of those calls are. And when I say calls for service, it's both self-initiated, right? And then calls that are coming in through dispatch. So they could be a wide array of calls. So just general calls for service. So over the past three months, the department's responded to and had 8,518 calls for service total. So you might ask yourself, what are some of the most frequent calls for services that we get? And again, they're a wide array, right? So disturbances and suspicious activities. We do get a lot of folks that see something, say something, right? Or even somebody wearing a hoodie that might look suspicious. So of course, we've got to go out and check those things out. Animal complaints is often a high volume. Disabled vehicles and vehicle checks. So I like the fact that we're out stopping, doing motor assistance and helping folks on the roads. Warrant services. So that would include municipal servicing of warrants as well as county or other warrants that are entered in the federal system through NCIC. And then one of the good ones that I like is just general field contacts or speak with officers, right? So are we seeing folks out walking at different times or are we just checking on folks? Not to mention the public is calling and just asking general assistance or questions. to mention the public is calling and just asking general assistance or questions or to general speak to officer that's not necessarily classified as a certain crime? So this kind of represents a steady workload across patrol shifts on, on the streets versus just CID and consistent with some community engagement. So now let's talk about traffic and collision analysis. So during this same time period, we investigated two hundred and fifty-nine motor vehicle collisions. Unfortunately, none of those were any fatalities. We have had one since then, but within that timeframe, no fatalities. So I think that's a plus. So an interesting fact that often people ask is kind of when is the peak collision times, right? So generally speaking, that's between three PM and five PM. And I think that's indicative of probably what everybody sees with traffic with a school letting out, right? Businesses letting out or what we even call the Durant rush hour sometimes, the folks moving around or going to get something to eat. Another one, the highest collision days are Fridays and then that's followed by Tuesdays and Thursdays. And so probably no surprise where are we seeing kind of those collision corridors, if you will. And some of those roadways are University Boulevard, Main Street, Washington Avenue, Radio Road, and North First. But again, those are kind of our major corridors and where we're seeing a lot of our traffic or congestion sometimes. So trying to make traffic enforcement and visibility patrols remaining a focus and driving down any collisions. So we often get asked too, on those same activities, is kind of what's the, the trending crimes, right? And so of course, that does change sometimes from month to month. There's usually a three to five kind of aperture or frame, if you will, of certain crimes. So generally in speaking, with this in the three month time period, it's been drug-related investigations or complaints. So either arrest, ongoing investigation, or even a complaint of somebody in the area, somebody in the neighborhood, they think they smell something, see something, high traffic, strange hours, that sort of stuff. So that could be categorized as a complaint for us to do an investigation. The other one is property theft or larceny. So not necessarily from a burglary, but just property that's outside, right, they're not breaking the threshold to get into a building. So that could be something that's in a yard or outside or in a parking lot. And then another one that we see that's pretty regular is auto burglaries. And I'd say a large percentage of the time on those, what we've seen is it's unlocked vehicles. Most of them are not locked. It's kind of doors of opportunity that they jiggle or open at night. So within that, our uniform crime reporting patterns have shown that the, the highest crime days in the last three months have been Mondays, Wednesdays, and Saturdays. The larceny and theft is pretty much steady throughout the day. There's no specific timeframe. Any assaults generally that we have, simple assaults, or even the small windows that we have any aggravated assaults are generally from seven PM to eleven PM. And then burglaries are occurring from seven PM to eleven PM. Of course, that's, that's nightfall when things start to get dark. So six hundred and seventy-eight arrests were made in that three month timeframe. So giving you the top arrest categories are drug-related offenses again, public intoxication is one, and then other just unspecified, unclassified that are grouped all together. The highest arrest days in those three months for us have been Sundays, Thursdays, and Saturdays. And the peak arrest times are between five and nine PM with another spike between eleven PM and two AM, which is indicative of folks moving after they've been out for the night. So our criminal investigations division, or as I'll refer to it as a CID, they investigated three, what we'd call major index crimes, or pretty violent crimes in that three month timeframe. I can attest to that within twenty-four, forty-eight, and seventy-two hours on those, they were making arrests, identifying suspects, and taking people off the streets that were suspected of those crimes. So I think that's a good turnaround. CID's current caseload right now is seventy-eight general investigations with three burglaries and nine sexual crimes. And CID continues to show strong case resolution and some closure rates of those cases. Community outreach, talk about something positive for a minute, right? We often deal with the negative, unfortunately. So community outreach. During this last three month period, we planned for our first annual national night out, which I'll use that in my next three of the actual delivery of it, right? But we had the planning stages that was new to all of us, new to the department. So that was a learning curve. We learned a lot that was interesting and I felt good about it. And that included what we think is about at least two hundred and eighty attendees. We gauged that by the amount of hot dogs we served. If anybody ate two, then maybe just boosted our numbers, I guess. Some of the, the exciting things we had there was Duncan achieve, which I gotta give credit to our public safety partners. So we've gone to work kind of building public safety teams and so they were good sports and jumped right in there. Some of the other activities we did was Boys and Girls Club. So we went by with Durant Police Department basketballs and challenged them to a game of pig. And with that, it lasted a long time because I'm not very good at basketball, so. But, and then we gave out some of the basketballs, so that was enjoyable. We actually produced a lot of public safety announcements or videos in conjunction and joint operations with kind of our public safety team. We actually supported multiple community events, including parades, demonstrations, so that we were giving them proper overwatch and safety, concerts, and a large participation in the following deputy Jared Taylor 5K benefit run. So talk a little bit about training and professional development and policy. So department-wide initiatives included some active shooter training and we're starting up with our rescue task force, which is a combined effort between fire and police. We did some driver and defensive tactics training, firearms qualification. We kind of resurrected our, our monthly in-service training so that we're trying to be the best and the safest of what we do and provide the best product to the community. Leadership development, and then one of our major projects or milestones was a project that started in 2020, and that was the Lexi Pole Policy Implementation. And that is kind of the industry standard, if you will, of law enforcement and also the O-MAG kind of supported policy network or program. So we were able to implement that fully and we're actually starting on what is called DTVs, which is daily training bulletins, which is ensuring officer trains on those policies. And it's a, it's a brief and it's a small test to make sure they retained or read what they're looking at. Staffing, we're doing good on staffing with boots on the ground. We're, we've got one vacancy right now. We've got two recruits in training. Some of our upcoming goals and initiatives is a salamander program in conjunction, again, with our public safety partners, and that's an asset and a personnel tracking program. Our ABLE, active bystander for law enforcement training. We're re-implementing CompStat, which is data-driven accountability and deployment so that we can patrol with purpose and show that we're, we're measuring what matters of what we do out there. And then our officer wellness program so that we can support resilience and mental health of our officers. Other than that, again, I'd like to give thanks to our public safety partners and we've established some workdays. They didn't come help on that, but those workdays, we got a roll-off delivered, replaced some tiles that were stained, basic cleanup and work around the police department to try to get rid of some things that we didn't need that were outdated and just overall improve appearances and professionalism. Other than that.
Can you tell us about 911?
Yes, we have a 911 director, so that is a plus. We went two or three years with just some supervisors and a, a police officer or lieutenant was put in place of kind of the director, right? Which no fault to theirs, I think we needed a, a skill set that was specific to 911 communication, somebody that had that skill set, the experience, and we're looking at decades-plus experience. So we were able to hire somebody in that position who also has a teaching certification, which we need some training and daily observation report cleanup. So that's been pretty beneficial too. That's, that's been a big help. And there's somebody in there owning it every day. I think it's important for some of our divisions to have true owners that are in it every day that see it, smell it, touch it, all that sort of stuff so that they have a good gauge of what's going on.
Very good. Comments or questions for Chief Petty?
I got a few questions. Over the last few months, we've had murder overdose resulting in a twenty-four-year-old girl losing her life. We had an attempted rape and stabbing in a park that was, that's been, is frequented by our citizens. We had a traffic stop involving explosives, guns, drugs. What are we doing to curb that? Are we?
All, all good questions. I can tell you from my past experience, Durant typically has some violent crime. Usually it's in small increments and hopefully and usually it's an anomaly. But that said, a hundred percent agree with what you're saying. So we are resurrecting CompStat. So CompStat compares statistics and measures crime. Again, are we measuring what matters out there and the impacts that we're having? So if we're not tracking that, how do we combat it? So we are resurrecting our CompStat right now so that we can start patrolling with purpose and make sure we're putting resources where they need to be. And then further in the future, how do we restructure, right, to combat some of those areas and get out in front of these things or even somewhat predict them before they happen? But I hope I'm right, but typically we've had some violent crimes in, in the decades that I have been around and generally it's, it's kind of in a cycle and we won't see it again. But having said that, I want to be very conscientious and cautious to make sure that we're measuring what we're doing and trying to put resources where they need to go.
And then earlier you said our top arrests are drugs. Those probably are number one. Are we doing anything on the narcotic side to get those guys help?
Yes, sir. So we just reassigned the, the K-9, one of the K-9s to it, and we are actually in conversations with other jurisdictions right now on developing a task force, if you will, that gives us the jurisdictional ability. And more importantly, I think really the most important is the information sharing so that we're sharing intel because drugs don't stop at a city limits and vice versa. And just recently, we have amounts coming from out the county into the city. So, and on top of that, we're, we're leveraging our ATF and federal TFO jurisdictional and joint task force to combat that as well.
Okay.
But yeah, that, that's in the development process right now. I've had a few meetings with the sheriff on that.
All right. That's all I had.
Nothing else? Thank you, chief.
Yes, sir.
Good report. Appreciate it. Next is Chief Langford with the Fire Department.
Hey, Chief Petty, I had one more thing to ask. Can you get me like the drug statistics, maybe like by the next meeting or something? Just so I can look them over, like what's been, you know, confiscated, like drug mount wise? All right, thank you.
Good afternoon. They just informed me I only had two minutes, so.
Yeah, he used up the rest of it, yeah.
I'm gonna make it short and sweet.
I do think you sat in the dump tank a whole lot longer.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, I think that's true.
That worked out.
Anyway, I'm gonna be short and sweet with mine and kind of leave, you know, bullet points there, so I'll give third quarter run numbers. We had four hundred and fifty-one calls for service. Out of those, a hundred and sixty-eight were fire calls or associated with fires and then two eighty-three were EMS or rescues associated with that. Moving into capital improvement projects, we actually finished up two that was from the twenty-four, twenty-five budget year. We put the new engine two in service. And then also, we finally got our battalion one put, put in service. So both of those were on order for quite some time before we finally got them. So for our twenty-five, twenty-six budget year, we have ordered two new Ford F-450 four-by-fours that are gonna be cabin chassis for brush one and brush three. Those are ordered and expected to have a build date of end of this month or November. That's what the manufacturer's telling us. So general budget, everything's working out just as we predicted. We've used twenty-five percent of it, which is on schedule for this time. Staffing, currently we're fully staffed and not expecting any retirements or resignations at this time that we know of. So apparatus and equipment, all of our trucks and equipment are in service. Nothing's out of service at this time, so. And hadn't had any major repairs over the last quarter, so that's good news for us. Training, just a couple, a couple topics that the guys have been going through. Over the last quarter, we had boat ops and water rescue review and training conducted out at Lake Durant. We've had search and rescue with victim removals. All three shifts have worked on that. Vehicle extrication, and then we've got several new guys that are starting their new driver operator training, and that includes drafting operation, pumping operations, and vehicle operation. So we had five members that completed the hazmat operations course, and then we also just started in-house emergency medical responder course, and we got seven guys attending that. So catching everybody up on their medical responder training. Couple activities to note, as everybody's aware, September eleventh, nine-eleventh, we, we conducted a tribute with activities at elementary schools, Northwest Heights, WI, and George Washington. We participate with the third grade on all of those. So we touch, not touch, we participate with all those kids and we go through a memorial type deal with them, bring them up to speed on what nine-eleven was. And then we go through some activities. We actually get them out on playgrounds, they get to go unroll and roll hoses, spray water, victim carries, ladder carries, different things. That way they can see the activities that the fire department actually does. And it's a really good time, the kids love it and the fire department gets to engage with them and, you know, it's a very good time. Kids enjoy it, teachers enjoy it, and the firemen enjoy it, so. And then one other thing that we started, just putting new emphasis on, is pre-fire plans. We've always done to some degree, but we're trying to put a new emphasis on pre-fire plans. We've identified nine hundred and sixteen commercial businesses in town. So ISO and NFPA recommends that those are visited each year, and that's something that we've been lacking on in the past. We purchased some new, first new software that we put on our iPads. And so we divided those up by three, so each shift will go out and go to those businesses. They're looking for any hazards that may be in place. They're getting mercy contacts. They're just seeing the, the outlay or the inlay of those, those businesses. And it's better for our guys to see those now than it is at two o'clock in the morning when something's on fire, so. And we're trying to meet with the business owners if they're there. So we build that connection between our firemen and, and the business owners. So that's something you should see our guys out and about going to commercial businesses. So like I said, we divided them out and we're gonna make sure we get every one of them within the year, so. So that's something pretty new that we're putting out and hopefully, hopefully that'll build some, some rapport between the business owners and our firemen, so, in a positive way. That's all I got. Y'all got any questions?
I just got one. How many calls for overdoses have you been called out on?
I don't have that one in, in particular, but I can certainly get it.
Okay, yeah, I'd just like to see that.
Okay. It's, there are several in there.
No, I got you.
So, not we get Narcan and that's, that's something that's, that's given out rather frequently.
Gotcha.
So, any other questions?
Thank you, chief. Good report. Appreciate it.
Two minutes.
Yeah, there you go. Great job. Okay. Next is Director Ezell of Emergency Management.
The key stuff is, I'll forfeit mine to everybody else. Good evening, council. So in the best interest of time, I'll just go through some highlights. So right now, currently, all but one of our outdoor warning sirens in the city is working. We are having, it has an issue where it's just no sound. It'll rotate. Everything that we can work on checks fine, so we have it called in to be fixed. In this past three months, the, a new siren was installed at Keithley Park to replace the one that was taken out in an auto accident the night of a tornado. Other than that, we've done maintenance and preventive maintenance on twelve other sirens. Some federal, or some funding that we have came in, so we received our ten thousand dollar quarterly grant July thirtieth from the state. The next quarter, which is the fourth quarter, is due tomorrow. I got it turned in last week, so we should have our payment by the end of the month for it. We also, in this last quarter, received a grant from Homeland Security for a little over four thousand dollars for service for our, for the Starlink internet that the Homeland Security has provided us. So some notable events that we've done, we completely rewrote the city of Durant's emergency operations plan in this last quarter. We've worked to, worked to complete a continuity of operations plan for the city and worked with Chief Petty on creating a COOP plan for the comm center and moving a secondary PSAP to the EOC. We've created MOUs between the city of Durant and Durant Independent School District for transportation and use of their facilities for. transportation and use of their facilities for evacuation sites, for anything that could warming shelters, cooling shelters, whatever it may be. We've worked with DISD, Bryan County Public Safety Personnel, for their annual DISD security and planning, safety planning meeting yearly. We've conducted radio testing. We went out, Durant High School is notoriously bad for public safety radio. So several years ago, when we had a hoax shooter event at the, at the high school, public safety radio was not working out of the building. And so we went and did some testing inside the building to find what frequencies would work that we could use as an alternate form of communications in the event that that happened again. We responded to SOSU Aviation and Durant Regional Airport for weather-related damages, and we notified our state and federal agencies of the damages on our side. We were asked to participate in the US Army, McAllister Army Ammunition Plant Exercise, a full-scale exercise. We were chosen of one of three drone teams for the State of Oklahoma to attend and be a part of that, and we did that last week. It was a great honor, we felt, and to realize the difficulty it is to get to fly in DOD, no-fly zone airspace. So the hurdles we had to overcome to do that and to work around to make it work. And then also while we were there, we were asked to assist in the search of a missing child in Pittsburgh County for a drone flight. We've also done some mapping for the City of Durant. We bought some new mapping software, and so we are flying the downtown area. We've flown from Southeast Third to sixty-nine, seventy-five Main Street and multi-streets each side of Main Street and doing high-resolution mapping that we can overlay onto satellite imagery. So we have pre-disaster mapping in case something goes, comes through here, then we can go back and this is what it looked like. And resolution is a hundred times better than Google Earth. We have flew multiple safety overwatches for the Durant Fall Concert Series, so every concert, we were out flying Overwatch for that. We've flown Overwatch for multiple demonstrations in the City of Durant, and we provide the live stream video back to the incident command post. We've had four trainings held at the EOC in the last quarter. Attended the Narcan Train, the Trainer Class, and we'll be getting some classes scheduled for city employees and the public to attend to get some Narcan training. And we've done a preparedness training for the LDS Church. They wanted us to come in and do some training for them and their people. I am the Oklahoma Emergency Management Association's Southeast Area Representative, and so with that, I get to facilitate and plan quarterly meetings and one two-day workshop every year. And so we had this last quarter, our two-day workshop where I have to get all the training speakers to come in. It was held at West Bay in Kingston. We had ninety-three in attendance there. Ms. Pope came and spoke to our group about the cyber incident because we actually did a cyber exercise during the training. I have entered all the Bryan County schools into our CalTopo mapping software, and then I'm reaching, have reached out to every school superintendent to ask them to send me floor plans of each of their buildings, so then I can, when I, we click on that school building, it will pull up a floor plan of that building for public safety needs if something happened at that building. Also done the same, put all the Bryan County Fire Departments in there. My safety coordinator created a new health and safety manual for the city along with the annexes, appendixes, and references. Coordinated OMAG, with OMAG to get chainsaw training for city employees. And of course, we monitor weather, deploy storm spotters, damage assessments, do postings for schools, our city employees, and our partners. Anybody have any questions?
Any questions, Emergency Management?
Thank you.
All right, good report. Thank you, sir. Next is Mr. Cotrell, Community Development.
I'm gonna read through every one of these permits real quick.
We got all nine.
All right, so we had some technical errors on getting some of these permits off, but since July first, we have had hundreds of permits come in from accessory buildings, demolition, electrical, demo, remodel, new construction. They have got a total project valuation of, I believe, fifteen million, eight hundred and twenty thousand, with the city collecting a hundred and eighteen thousand in fees. The building inspectors have conducted two hundred and something inspections in that time. We are seeing a increase in developers wanting to come to Durant, so we're seeing an uptick in permits pulled. People wanted to come in, develop undeveloped land, so we are, that is a good thing. We are on the rise in that department. Code enforcement, not gonna lie, July was kind of a downtime. We restructured that department a little bit, and since then, we're sending uptick, uptick in abatements, owner abatements, and city abated properties, so. And then our nine-one-one addressing is, well, he's addressing, so if y'all's got any questions, that's all I've got for you today.
All right. That's short and sweet. Any questions for Mr. Cotrell?
I'd just like to remind everybody on the, on the addressing, that Aaron Walkup does all that. He addresses for the entire, we have one person addressing for the entire county.
Yeah, most other cities have a team of three to four that do that, and he does it all on his own, so.
Right. Just great work. All right, no questions then? Thank you, Mr. Cotrell. Appreciate that. Next, we'll hear from Robbie Tonnaby on the Community Center and Library.
Good evening. Business per usual. We managed to make it through the summer. Summer reading is always our biggest thing in June and July, and overall saw eight hundred kids. So Tuesdays and Thursdays were a little crazy, a little crazy. We kind of take a short break in August and then get back with our after-school programs in September. We've altered some things we're doing for the kids. Our Thursday after-school program has changed to a board game club, and we've got several parents that are, and hopefully the kids are very excited about that chance for the kids to unplug and come in and, and learn about board games and, and not have their face in a computer for a while. Our attendance was pretty steady. Our revenue is on track to be up at about eight or ten percent for this year. We implemented a new credit card processing program, and it works on a kiosk, and so we run all our credit card transactions, and so we're not limited in what we can do. You can run a credit card for ten cents or ten dollars, and that has really helped. A lot of people just don't carry cash anymore, and so you have people who come in with everything from, you know, needing papers printed off, return labels, legal papers, just everything under the sun. I joke and say some days I feel like I work at Staples because do a lot of, between that and helping grandpa get his cellphone fixed and, and all that sort of stuff. Still sending faxes, believe it or not, we're one of, I think, three places in the city. And I don't know about y'all, I do, I do not want to go to the grocery store to send a fax, so I think I'll go to the library and do that. We also take, we've seen our utility bill payments go back up again. We had over five hundred dollars in those, so those we do through our drive-through window. And hopefully, we'll be starting planning on our library park. I've been told it's, it's been in engineering since July of 2021. We're hoping, we've been told by the engineer that we should have something in the next month or two, because I know it's gonna take a year or so of doing dirt work and grading and getting all that ready, but there are no parks on that side of town. It will be connected to the library. It will be fenced. It will be open when the library's open, closed when the library's closed, and hopefully that'll bring a much-needed resource to that side of town. Our main project will be, this will be our first year not participating in the Health Literacy Grant because we are doing it ourself. We have our own funds and with community partnerships to help fund that. So I will apologize for the uptick in the traffic accidents on Tuesdays and Thursdays. That's because everybody's coming to the library for yoga and zumba, so. Yeah, 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 yeah. That's become, that's one of our most popular things to do. And then with the Bryan County Ag Person and 4-H Person, she comes and teaches cooking, sewing, you know, sewing's kind of a lost art. And so the classes in June and July for the parents to bring a kid, she had one class, I think it was the end of June, where she had, I think, fifteen children and eight parents. So that's something, because you know, they don't, I don't know if you can even take home ec in school anymore. So a lot of parents really appreciate that opportunity for their kids to be able to learn those sort of skills. And our next big event, we just had the Friends Book Sale, is the Second Annual Boots and Badges Blood Drive that we host at the library between Fire and Police. And remind me again, the one, oh, it was Fire, right? Yes, so Fire has the trophy, so December twenty-second at the library, because we have the big facility. I think the goal last year was eighteen or twenty, and I think they drew thirty-four. So it's, it's a way to bring the community together. I know McAllister has a huge Boots and Badges. They draw over a hundred. Our goal is to get there someday, so Fire and Police been very good. Good-natured poking at each other, but they did a really good job last year of recruiting people to come donate. We average five to six blood drives a month at the library, so this is one of the big ones. Any questions?
Very good. Any questions, Robbie? Way more than a library, right? My gosh.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Very good. Thank you for that report. Appreciate it. Okay, last but not least, from the Senior Activity Center is Ms. Trent. You might need to pull that mic, there you go.
Way down.
There you go.
Okay, if you don't know me, I'm Dana Trent, and I've worked for the city for almost five years. Started out in the Grants Department and Finance, and now I'm out at the Senior Center. Been there a little over two years. I drive the senior transportation bus. On average, I have about ten riders per day that we go around, and it equals about four hundred rides within the last three months. It's picking them up, taking them home. We go to the health fair, you know, things like that. There are three standalone programs in our building. The city owns the building, but we have the Bryan County Retired Senior Volunteer Program in there, and they do the commodity boxes and Tai Chi, and meals on wheels and volunteers. And then we have the Oklahoma Healthy Agent Initiative in there, which is OHI, and he does classes on Mondays and Wednesdays, and it's staying active in Independent Living for Life, sail, and Tai Chi in the afternoons. We also have the Southern Oklahoma Nutrition Program in there, and on average, in the last three months, they have served out five thousand eight hundred and fifty-nine meals, hot meals, out of our commercial kitchen in our building. They have also gave out, handed out five thousand nine hundred and ten meals for homebound meals, and these are delivered only within the city limits, so it's not out to the whole Bryan County. And then they have frozen chef meals. A lot of people call them like TV dinners that they gave out, and they did about four hundred and thirty-five of them this last three months. We have a lot of fun. We have bingo, karaoke, cheer exercise, Tai Chi, sail, gospel singing, and skipbo for the ladies, and some gentlemen finally joined in. The last Tuesday of every month, we celebrate birthdays for that month. We always have a sponsor come in, Judy Poulsen. Her mother used to go to the center years ago, and her mother, before she passed, she said, "What are they gonna do for birthdays?" And so for the past, I don't know, twelve, fifteen years, Judy has recruited sponsors to come in and sponsor our birthday parties, so they bring snacks and whatever, and we just have a good time. The third Wednesday of every month is a grievance group, and we have heart-to-heart come in, and they lead that. In the last three months, we've had a nine-eleven remembrance celebration, and we had a senior prom last month. This is our third annual senior prom. So we have a prom king, a prom queen. They get a vote on them. They voted in the theme, so this year it was Hollywood red carpet. So we had the whole red, thirty-three feet of carpet and the whole nine yards, and, you know, called out their names as they come dancing down through there. And we also have a group called the Encounter Outreach Ministries. It's a men's ministry out of Tishomingo, and they come in and they have not only sang with our gospel group, but they also go out to our seniors' homes, and they clean up their gutters, and they repair their little things around the house. So they've been a blessing. Other than that, we just have fun. We've got a Halloween carnival coming up on the thirty-first at eleven forty-five. I gotta catch them before they go home for their nap, or they won't come back, so I catch them right in that space. But we're just having a good time. Come on out. We eat at eleven, have a good time. There's probably, give or take, sixty, seventy people a day that comes through different bins.
Great report. Good group too, by the way. Any questions or comments for Ms. Trent?
My oldest one is ninety-eight, by the way, and she is spunky as all get out.
Oh, my God. Wow.
Is that Ms. Andrews?
No, that's Mary Beth.
Okay.
Burger.
Got you. Okay.
That's a great group. Okay, thank you very much, Trent. All right, that concludes all the department reports.
Can I say something?
Please do. Please do.
Thank you all.
It's great work.
You all do great work, and I think, you know, we all see that now. Sometimes when you're going through all this, you just, you're doing it every day, but to do this and give these reports, you see what, all the good work that these directors are doing. I appreciate you all.
And we do as well, and thank you for leading that effort too. So again, thank you so much for, for those reports and for your work, and please pass our appreciation on to your staff who help you guys all accomplish the things that you just, you just brought to us. All right, next on our agenda, we're gonna move to number four, Administration. A couple of items, these are very similar. I'm gonna read them for the record. We're gonna consider, next is consideration and approval to participate in the Purdue Pharma LP bankruptcy case and the GESA settlement, including agreeing to the terms of the Purdue bankruptcy and the release of all claims against Purdue and the Sacklers and certain affiliates, and the permissible uses of monies received, which by the way, you can only get the money if you agree to spend it on what they want you to spend it on. Present to the settlements for opioid abatement and designation of an authorized representative to sign the subdivision participation forms to finalize the participation in these settlements, which is Resolution 2025-16. And you can tell that a lawyer wrote that and I didn't. Comments or questions? Do you have some things that you want to add to that, Pam?
Well, I'd just say that this is just part of the housekeeping that we need to do to be a part of this, these claims. We've already, the City of Durant's already been part of some. This is some additional that will come to the State of Oklahoma and then to the cities that participate.
What can that money be spent, used towards?
It is, it's mostly, I mean, all of it's on the opioid, you know, crisis, but it's for mitigation, it's for education, mostly the education.
Mostly education. Perfect. Okay. Like remember when they came out with all the anti-smoking stuff? It's kind of like that, except maybe not so demonstrative as the anti-smoking.
Thank you.
Comments or questions on that one? Now, there's two of these. This is just the one, which is the Purdue Pharma and the GESA settlement. No comments, no questions? Here, you're not, I make the emotion that... No comments, no questions. Hearing none, I'll make a motion that we approve this participation and authorize this designation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, which is item 4-1. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Shear?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Simulescu?
Yes.
Mayor Tucker?
Yes. Okay, item number 4-2 is very similar, except for the names are a little different. This is consideration of approval to participate in the secondary manufacturer settlements with Alvegen, Amneal Pharmaceuticals, Apatex, Hikma Pharmaceuticals, Indivior, Mylan, Sun Pharmaceuticals, Zitis Pharmaceuticals, and agreeing to the terms of the secondary manufacturing settlements, the release of all claims against those aforementioned companies, and agreeing to the permissible uses of monies pursuant to the settlements for opioid abatement, designation of an authorized representative to sign the subdivision participation forms to finalize participation in these settlements, which is Resolution 2025-17. So same thing, again, different lawsuit, if you will, different pharmaceutical, what do you call these, class action suit, different class action suits, what it both got to. Comments or questions on this step of this participation?
Motion approved for you, too.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 4-A-2. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Shear?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Simulescu?
Yes.
Mayor Tucker?
Yes. Next is item 4-B, which is a discussion, consideration, and possible action on Resolution 2025-18, revising the wage and salary plan. And so I know everyone sitting in the crowd that just gave all those great reports are now wanting to know how they're going to get some more money for doing all this work.
This doesn't directly affect them, because we do theirs in the budget.
Got you.
This is just the wage and salary plan where we're basing our new employees off of. This adopts the updated wage and salary plan for hourly and salary non-union positions. This, it reflects a 9% increase for grades 1 through 12 and 14. There's quite a few title changes and some positions that were added with the fiscal year '24, '25, and '25, '26. I can read through them if you want me to, but they're listed there.
I'll just say the majority of those, I think, because we had everybody listed as managers. You were a street manager or a dis-manager, and we changed them all to superintendents on a lot of those.
And there are a few like meter reader, we changed it to meter technician.
This puts us in line with similar cities, similar-sized cities, I'm assuming, pay-wise and description-wise.
Yes.
Comments or questions from Brandy on these changes in this resolution?
Motion approved. I don't know what it is here.
4-B.
It is 4-B. 4-B.
I'll second that. We have a motion and a second to approve item 4-B. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Shear?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Simulescu?
Yes.
Mayor Tucker?
Yes, that passes. Next is item 4-C, Consider Approval of Resolution Concerning Bridge Inspection Responsibility by Local Government for Compliance with National Bridge Inspection Standards in Contracts for April 1, 2026 to March 31 of 2028, which is Resolution 2025-15. Mr. Hightower?
This is a yearly bridge inspection that ODOT is required by the state of Oklahoma. ODOT gives you the choice to hire your own engineers, or they'll hire the ones for you, and typically, in the past, we've had ODOT choose our engineering firm that comes down and does these inspections.
There aren't that many of them around that do this kind of work, and if you're going to argue about something, it's best not to argue with the people that have the checkbook. So it's probably simpler and easier, since there are also few to choose from, to just let the people that are paying for it go ahead with it, right?
Yes, sir.
Comments or questions for Mr. Hightower on this, on this resolution?
Motion approved, 4-C.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 4-C. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Shear?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Simulescu?
Yes.
Mayor Tucker?
Yes, the motion passes. Next is item 4-D, which is Consider Acceptance of a Grant Award from the Oklahoma Department of Commerce for the 19496 CDBGSC 24 in the amount of $171,250.
This is a grant that we went out for to do the intersections at 7th and University and 12th and University in the overlay. It's a matching grant. We have the environmentals and everything finished, where we can release the funds, where we can go out for bids to get this project underway. And it will restrip right there at University at the light.
This is long overdue. I think everybody's been waiting for these intersections for decades.
We've, there've been a little delays in it, but we're getting there.
That's exciting time. That's exciting news. Motion approved, 4-D, one.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 4-D, number one. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Shear?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Simulescu?
Yes.
Mayor Tucker?
Yes. Next is item 4-D-2, which has to do with a discussion, consideration, and possible action to adopt the Residential Anti-Displacement and Relocation Assistance Plan related to the project that we just spoke, 19496 CDBGSC 24 project. So you're not moving anybody out of their house?
No, sir.
So there's really nothing to worry about, but we're going to comply with their plan, right?
Right. Yeah, we're not going to move anybody out.
But it's easier since we're not moving anyone out of their house.
Yeah.
Well, we have to comply with it anyway. So that being the case, I'll make a motion that we approve that plan.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 4-D, number two. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Shear?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Simulescu?
Yes.
Mayor Tucker?
Yes, that motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Hightower.
Thank you all.
Next is item 4-E, which is Consideration and Possible Approval of a Final Platte for Property Located Near Lindenwood Drive for HPH Investors, Lindenwood Phase 7, and I'm not going to read that legal description, so, Mr. Cotrell.
It's a short one. This was one that we had at last city council. We recommended, y'all had recommended to table it and take it back before planning commission. At that time, I included the preliminary plat that was approved, which will probably be what we start doing in the future, just so there's something to reference it to. It was indeterminate that no changes had been made from what was preliminary approved, so it was a three votes for yes and no votes for no on approval of the final plat for Lindenwood, so.
This was all with the terminology and all that, right?
Correct.
That we had all the questions about, and that's all been squared away from what I could tell. Okay.
Comments or questions on this property, Mr. Cotrell?
Most to approve, 4-E.
Now, second. We have a motion and a second to approve item 4-E. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Shear?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Simulescu?
Yes.
Mayor Tucker?
Yes, that item passes. Next is item 4-F, Consideration and Possible Approval of a Conditional Use Permit for Property Located at 109 West Lost Street, and I'm not reading that legal description either, so, Mr. Cotrell. This has to do with the kitchen, I understand.
Correct. They want to, and I didn't do it any justice. I put kitchen area. You're actually installing a pretty unique style of oven, right? Or, yeah, so, and they're going to serve pizza and stuff like that. It does conform with the overall use of that area. And with that being said, planning and zoning's recommendation was two yeses and one abstain.
And the abstain was because he's working on the project?
Correct.
So that was the only reason he abstained, right?
Correct.
Comments or questions?
I'll make the motion when we approve.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 4-F. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Shear?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Simulescu?
Yes.
Mayor Tucker?
Yes, that item passes as well. Last for tonight on the city council is item 4-G, Consideration and Possible Approval of a Conditional Use Permit for Property Located Near Shady Creek Road, really at the end of Shady Creek Road, if you know where that is, Mr. Cotrell.
Yep, and Shady Creek Road sits right behind Blackburn Plumbing out on North First Street. It's a dead-end road back there. This will run right to the end of the property. They're wanting to put up a new cell tower to support new cell equipment. I will point out that when it first came in, we were hesitant because of how close it's set to a legal non-conforming trailer house, but we did do some research in the ordinance, and it dictated that if, if an engineer sends in a design that shows it'll collapse in a much smaller area, then everything's fine and acceptable. And the engineer's document does show that it'll collapse within a 50-foot radius of itself. So with that being said, planning and zoning recommended approval of three yeses to zero nos, so.
And this, this has to do with a 50-foot square piece of property, so this isn't like a, it's a lot taller than it is, bigger.
Yes, sir. Correct.
And oh, by the way, it's 100 yards or so to another cell tower, so it's not like it's going to stand out. It's just going to be right next to one that's already there. So from that perspective, it seemed pretty straightforward to me. Comments or questions?
Y'all had quite a bit of discussion over this. I watched the meeting, and y'all talked, but then they kind of got off on other tangents about zoning that area and all, so I was kind of confused for a little while, but yeah, it seems like it's just a cellphone tower.
The board packet for this month was 270, 17 pages. 147 pages were dedicated to the cell tower in a 50-foot square.
That's crazy.
Lot of land. So been a lot of, a lot of ink spilled on this little 50-foot square conditional use permit. But can't say we're not thorough.
Correct.
Right? Very thorough.
Correct.
So any comments or questions on this, on this item?
Motion approved, 4-G.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 4-G. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Shear?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Simulescu?
Yes.
Mayor Tucker?
Yes, that item passes. Next is item 5, new business. There's no new business I'm aware of, and so I would move for adjournment of the city council.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the city council meeting. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Miller?
Here.
Councilmember Shear?
Here.
Vice Mayor Simulescu?
Here.
Mayor Tucker?
It's a yes vote.
Everybody's saying here.
We're adjourned. We're adjourned. So yes, we're adjourned.
You called the roll, and I was confused.
Y'all followed me. Y'all shouldn't. That was the mistake. Y'all followed me.
I didn't call it roll.
I was confused for a second, but I was like, maybe I zoned out.
I'm not the only one, man, okay? Welcome to my club about being confused.
I thought you were calling the utilities authority.
So, okay, speaking of which, at this time, I'll call to order a meeting of the Durant Utilities Authority. Will the clerk please call the roll? Now.
Trustee Miller?
Here. I was going to say yes, just to be funny, but I'm not.
Trustee Shear?
There.
Vice Chairman Simulescu?
Here.
Chairman Tucker?
Here. On the agenda for the Utilities Authority tonight is the consent items. There are two. One is meeting minutes approval from our last meeting, and the next is to acknowledge the receipt of a permit from the DEQ for the rehabilitation of our wastewater treatment plant, which I still want to celebrate some, although that doesn't sound very exciting. That's kind of a big deal to us, so I think I've just acknowledged it in the record right then. Comments or concerns on the consent agenda items? Do I hear a motion?
Most to approve consent items.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda items. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee Shear?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Simulescu?
Yes.
Chairman Tucker?
Yes, motion passes. There are no other items on the agenda for the Durant City Utilities Authority tonight. I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the Utilities Authority meeting. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee Shear?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Simulescu?
Yes.
Chairman Tucker?
Yes. At this time, I would call to order a meeting of the Durant Airport Authority. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Miller?
Here.
Trustee Shear?
There.
Vice Chairman Simulescu?
Here.
Chairman Tucker?
Here. We have a quorum on tonight's agenda for the Airport Authority. There's only one item. It's the consent agenda, and there's only one item on that, and that's also approval of the meeting minutes from the September 18th meeting. Do I hear a motion, or do we need to move that out of consent for further consideration?
Most to approve consent items.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda items. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee Shear?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Simulescu?
Yes.
Chairman Tucker?
Yes, the motion passes. There are no other items on the agenda for tonight. I'll make a motion we adjourn the Airport Authority meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the Durant Airport Authority. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee Shear?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Simulescu?
Yes.
Chairman Tucker?
Yes, we stand adjourned. At this time, I would like to call to order a quarterly meeting of the Durant Development Authority. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Miller?
Here.
Trustee Shear?
Here.
Vice Chairman Simulescu?
Here.
Chairman Tucker?
Here. We have a quorum. The only item on the agenda for tonight is in the consent agenda, which is approval of regular meeting minutes of the July 8th meeting. Does this item need to be removed for further consideration? And if not, do I hear a motion?
Motion approved, consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda item. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee Shear?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Simulescu?
Yes.
Chairman Tucker?
Yes, item passes. There are no other items on the Development Authority agenda for tonight. I'll make a motion we adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the Durant Development Authority meeting. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee Shear?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Simulescu?
Yes.
Chairman Tucker?
Yes, we stand adjourned. Thank you all very much.